Time is 7:30 and the regular session meeting of Borough Council in Kansasboro coming quarter and you have the regulation script.
President Miller.
Here.
Vice President Yen.
Here.
Councilman Agartha.
Hi, ma'am.
Councilman Lucas.
Yes.
Councilman Gary.
Present.
Councilman Martin.
Here.
Councilman O'Neil.
Here.
Mayor Ritter.
Here.
Elizabeth Cassidy.
Here.
Chief Myers.
Here.
Manager Sivert.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. With the record, Councilor Agartha is attending point A to Z. Also, I would like to announce before we start with the guest section that during the Personnel Committee section of this meeting, council will research into an executive session on a matter of personnel with possible action. So, we'll be here for a brief period of time. It will be very short and we'll come back at it. Now, we'll go on to guests. Dr. Jane Drake, Executive Director of Renaissance Mechanicsburg Revitalization Program. I'm here primarily just to give you an update on what's going on and it's all good news. Some of you have seen our notice, an advance notice of demolition day in the borough. It's going to be March 26th. It's going to start at 9:00 a.m. If you have any kiddos that want to have their picture taken beside the bulldozer, come at 9:00 o'clock. The first racket building by the bulldozer will start at 10:00. We'll have fun games, activities for everybody in the family. So, we want to make it a true fun and historic event in downtown Mechanicsburg. This is the first time there's been a proposal for a green space, a community space in Mechanicsburg and especially for that space. It's the first that was promised to be a community park for 200 years and now we're going to make it one. We're a little bit getting there, but we're going to do it. So, one of the questions relative to that involves a meeting that Roger, several members of our board and I had last week with the excavation company, John W. Blin, and Roger thought that it would be appropriate for me simply to come to you to get your thoughts on what we're going to do and I'm also going to give you my own recommendation if I can. The current building sits on a slab. We have the option of taking that slab out on May 26th or the follow-up to the demolition on the 27th of the community. Or, we have the option of leaving it in place for the time being until we're ready to rehabilitate that area into the community park. There are pros and cons to each side of that issue. One of the pros for leaving it in is that we will be covering it over, but it might provide some stability for that area of the park. The other, the negative side of it is we don't really truly need to have it there, but it would be an extra expense to us further down the line if we were to take it out and then build. Whereas if we had Blin remove that slab in the same way that a previous excavation contractor said they were going to do and then infill it, I know you can't really comment, but if there's anything I'm getting wrong, Roger.
No, you're fine.
Okay. But they would infill it immediately when the building was removed and therefore providing a base to the cover that's going to be put down. It's going to be a grass, an entire grass area for that space until we're ready to build. So, the options in front of us are keep the slab or remove the slab and put infill in that area. The recommendation of the first excavator who came and gave us an estimate was get that slab out of there. Get the slab out of there. Sorry. Fill it in and then just have a stable surface until we're ready to build or not. So, that's one of the reasons why I'm here is to kind of seek your counsel on that. Would it be appropriate for me to give you my recommendation now? Would you like to hear the thinking that we had when we were there? We finally agreed that if everyone who was there, Mr. McGorg, Roger and two folks from Blin, that it would be better to remove the slab and infill it at this point rather than maintain the slab and worry about it later. And since that was in keeping, and Blin actually agreed with that and they said they would do whatever it was that the excavators who submitted the original survey cost as much would do if they had the job. So, that's one of the reasons why I'm here is to get your take on that. I don't know that the project hinges on your thumbs up or thumbs down on this, but it is an issue that I thought and Roger thought that you may want to at least be aware of.
Thank you for providing us that courtesy.
Okay. Thank you for providing us that courtesy, although it wasn't necessary.
We appreciate it.
Well, thank you. I can see where, you know, you've got skin in the game too and we're not a call of partnership or nothing and one of our best partners is the borough at this point and making sure that we build a park that's going to be consistent with the borough's, not only with the comprehensive plan, but the risk of the future and what that community park is going to look like for the next generations.
I don't think we need to take official action, but if it's okay, we could just say, in my personal opinion, go ahead with your recommendation.
Excellent.
I would agree. I mean, I feel like if we probably end up removing the slab later on down the line, we might as well just do it now while the, all the buildings are already there and you're not spending extra money later.
Yeah, I agree. Strike while the slab's hot, I agree with the expression.
Any word with the decisions, what were the other, Roger? Uh, no, I think tearing it out now would give them the opportunity to create a site from a stormwater perspective. Letting that slab in there, you've got basically a level. You know, I can't control where the stormwater's running off of it. Plus, the pipes that are in the ground for the, with the toilets in there, those pipes are going to fill up, that stuff's going to wash out, it's going to create problems there. I think the smart move is to remove the slab, stabilize the area as best again and go from there. It is a highly visible site and they're going to be trucking stuff off-site now when they're doing the demolition. They might as well just do all that at this time, especially with the state road impacts that they're going to have. I think that's the smart choice, to do it now.
Mr. Agartha, you're the next.
I agree. Thank you, Jane, for putting so much thought into it and bringing it to us, but it's not the recommendation, you know, go to the experts and I agree with that.
Yeah, I talk to them.
So, Bob?
I think the partnership has been working hard at this and you have the insight and the knowledge to make the best decision.
Okay. Thank you for your courtesy of the response. I appreciate that. Just another update, we are beginning to work diligently toward the Community Day in the Park, which is the event that the borough turned over to the partnership for our first event last year. We are looking to finalize our date. This year, we're doing something a little bit different. As Councilman Anthony knows, we will be collaborating with the Wildcat Foundation on this event as well. They will be holding events inside the stadium and they will be also hosting a 5K run until end of year. We're working out the details of the division of labor, but I think it's a real smart move on our part in order to embrace the Wildcat Foundation in this happy Community Day as well. We will be increasing the number of vendors and activities for the folks. Last year, we had over 1,500 people. We intend to have many more than that this coming year. Grant applications are in process and we hope to begin to build at the square with a good headwind in about a year. Thank you. Appreciate that. Anybody else? Any thoughts?
The only thing, when you get the finalized plan of what you're going to do there, bring it in so we can discuss it and we'll run it by our, we'll run it by the building people and make sure that everything is handled that way. You already have your demolition permit, you already have warrants, things to tear the building down.
Yes.
So, you're in good shape to tear it down. It's when you go to rebuild. I just want to have, I want to make sure that you've got all the ducks in a row before.
You bet.
So, that way, we're all covered.
Yeah, I'm pretty type A about that anyway.
Yep.
The other thing is we will be having another stakeholders meeting. Once the demolition is over and done, it's, we feel it's our obligation to engage the community one more time in, to show them our current plans. Have you seen that video that Dirk and Anthony had prepared? Didn't we show that here?
Yes.
Okay. And then we'll get input one more time before we finalize our concept study for the square and you'll be the first to know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Drake. Does anyone have a set of comments? Are there any comments left?
I'm here to talk about the property at 426 West Simpson Street. I'm Nancy Lilly and I'm at 417 West Main Street. I forgot that. Okay. Chapter 10A in the borough's certified ordinances and resolutions is entitled Historic Preservation. It was, I assume, written for that very purpose, historic preservation. It established historic districts, it created hards. I'd like to read the last line in the Harb website. It says, "Please help the Mechanicsburg retain its historic integrity." We all know that I am not happy with what's going on at 426 West Simpson Street. I feel that the borough has not done due diligence in permitting that property and I'm going to read to you this document, chapter 10A, section 5-2, Certificate of Appropriateness Required. A certificate of appropriateness shall be required for the rest construction, reconstruction, exterior restoration, restoration, demolition, or raising of a building that is visiting or to be built in the disney district where such work will affect the exterior of the building, such work or exterior facilities can be seen from a street or public way. The permit officer shall not issue a permit for any such work until the council has issued a certificate of appropriateness. Or it shall constitute any repair or certain count. Okay. There is significant, significant alteration to that structure. It is all clearly visible from Simpson Street and it is not in keeping with its historical integrity. There is one rule for which, because this was a fire, this may have been permanent. It's chapter, it's section 511. In the event that the building has been rendered unfit for habitation because of fire, explosion or other similar causes, the provisions of this chapter may be waived by the permit officer to the extent that the applicant can issue a permit once proceed to render the property habitable under the permit officer's terms, provided the building is rebuilt as it originally was constructed using the same materials. Any changes to the property must finally be approved under the terms of this chapter and if they are not so approved, the expense of renewing them, so to obtain approval shall be borne by the building owner, the permit issued by the permit officer should so state, and any failure to state shall not excuse the owner from bearing such expense and obligation. This is pretty serious stuff. I don't think that the borough has done their due duty in carrying out the requirement for a certificate of appropriateness for this building. I know that there is a certificate up for about tonight, however, to the best of my knowledge, you're voting on shingles and windows. And with that, I'll stand because I'm almost out of time. I'm short, but I have three more minutes to go until you finish. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Sivert. Any other comments?
Jane, now we'll move on to the mayor's report. Thank you very much. December 31st, New Year's Eve, Rensselaer was well attended for relevant board cooperative and shout out to Daryl Westby for coordinating the events. It went off without a hitch. January 3rd, the minister's oath of office to report to Mechanicsburg Councilmembers at the reorganization meeting. The mayor was sworn into office by District Justice Mark Martin. 11th, the state redistricting plan hearing at Upper Allen Township. Kingsborough Borough is opposed to the state redistricting plan. 19th, the Kingsborough Chamber of Commerce annual dinner and business meeting. Repair and cleaning of the railcar was discussed. He notes that it was John Law and Hershey at this point and interesting. 28th, Church of God and Eskey Training Institute visited the Union Church. Ed Rosenberry had 10 students from the tri-county area in attendance. Sister of the Union, history of the Church of God was the topic. Thursday, 13th, friends of the Jersey T-Sync and Forest Library on a book sale at 114 North Fork Street. 12,000 books for all ages. Next sale will be April 30th. End of report. Thank you.
Manager's report. Not as long as Mayor Ritter's, but a lot of office work is done, getting everyone up to speed with Linda retiring and drawing back further and further from the amount of time she spends in the office. So, that's taking up the majority of the time right now. Getting things ready for the pool, believe it or not, already this time of year. January 31st, the municipal county outreach, the commission meeting had an outreach meeting. I attended by Zoom. I think Councilman Anthony was there, Councilperson Everything was there. It was a very good discussion. A lot of big regional topics were discussed, particularly the tolling on I-83, on the I-83 Bridge. And Kirk Stoner sent a follow-up email to that. They are going to pursue with Dolphin County, hopefully a suit against Pendott to try to at least stop them or slow them down from tolling the I-83 Bridge. On the 9th, met with Jane Drake and the board from Renaissance Mechanicsburg at 1 West Main. We discussed what they're going to do, options they're going to go through. March 26th is the day. March calendars will be able to get a little sight, but at least you can stand across the street and watch the building go down. On the 14th, last night, we had the authority meeting. Everything was, I feel, a pretty good meeting. We went through a few items, discussed upcoming projects. So, I know President Miller will be willing to more detail on that. And finally, we've got the files, all paper property files that everyone sees when they come in and they look through the big window. They're reading down to the point where we're ready to start digitizing all that stuff. So, that stuff, and I've assigned a project manager to it, so we're going to move forward with that, get that stuff going. And hopefully, we'll be able to have everything up and running as far as that goes and get those, get another office set up in there. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you. I will provide the historical authority report and there was a very light agenda last night. We met last night because Monday is a holiday, so that's why we met last night. And basically, we discussed our goals for 2022, reviewed the again, and we had a presentation by Engineer Rogalsky. The most significant part of that presentation, I believe, was his plans for the Broad Street and George Street, or the Keller Street and Broad Street, Broad, Ella, George project. And there's a possibility that the authority may want to start on that or get the ball rolling by fall of this year. But it does take a long time to get that going, so it'll either be fall of this year or next year. But this is a very interesting presentation and something that is badly needed in that area. So, that's the end of our report. Moving on to approval of the agenda. Do we have any additions or amendments from items from the consent, consent agenda or the regular agenda? Do we have any amendments or changes to the proposed minutes? Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Right, that makes sense.
Mr. Rooker, he's motion. Do you have a second? Sir, Mr. Anthony, second. The agenda is approved. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion for approval of the items on the consent agenda? Sir, Anthony, move. Do you have a second? Mr. Rooker, seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to the regular agenda. Finance Administration Ordinance, Mr. Anthony.
Action to forward Resolution 032022, Chapter 0, fee resolution to the solicitor for review and add a fantasy.
Do we have a motion?
Wait, I'm motion.
Mr. Rooker, he's motion. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
I'm back in. Do I ask a point of parenthood procedure? Sorry. If the motion is coming from the committee, you don't need a second.
Well, then, I think you should. Just apply that as a motion.
Coming from the committee. It's not. Just ask. Or I'll be specific when I.
So, we have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? Any discussion on the fees? Okay. Jane, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed.
We're still getting past the Weber's.
Next.
Yes. Action to adopt ordinance 1074, amending Chapter 1, Part 2, Section 1207, the powers and duties of the office for the borough manager.
Sound motion. Is a motion. Mr. Anthony, he's motion. Do you have a second?
I have a second.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree. The ordinance passes. The ordinance passes and we have discussion. Thanks.
So, this is a discussion on the letter received 13122 by Dustin Dykman for the zoning ordinance change covered tattoo establishments.
This was the letter that we ran with the foundation last. The procedure usually is if you ask to have a zoning ordinance changed, they write a letter. Solicitor Cassidy, this is what we did with the property on the corner of Simpson and Wanted Street. They wanted the zoning ordinance changed as far as parking was required. This is basically the same thing. Does council entertain the idea of particularly looking at this for tattoo establishments? The current ordinance, the way it's written, is they only allow them on the second floor in the commercial man and market district. I don't know exactly the reason behind why that was written the way it is, but that is the only commercial establishment that's allowed on second floors in certain zoning districts. So, other than that, it's permitted in the industrial zone and that's the only places that a tattoo parlor is actually permitted. This gentleman would like to have that second floor, because when you go to the second floor with a commercial place, you trigger all kinds of ADA requirements and everything else. It just makes it very, very unfinancially efficient to do something like that. So, it depends on how they want to discuss this, how they want to go with it. I know we are looking at updating the zoning ordinance to the comprehensive plan, but this is a borough resident and he did, he did take the time to write us a letter.
So, you're admitting, how long have you got other ordinance that has affected the second floor?
2010.
Okay. And you don't know the particular rationale behind that?
I don't remember, but there was a, there was a tattoo parlor at one time downtown that had some problems. And I think part of the reason for doing this was to discourage that through zoning. And it was permitted in the industrial zone, but as far as downtown, it's kind of limited as to where it can go.
Mr. Cassidy, have you had an opportunity to go into this issue?
I might have had a chance to review the zoning ordinance with respect to this particular issue, limiting tattoo parlors for the second floor in the downtown district. That being said, Manager Sivert is correct in terms of the process. The request coming to council by letter is a preliminary step towards, moving towards a zoning ordinance amendment. This is a discretionary matter on the part of council, so if council is not open to the idea of amending the zoning ordinance at this time, then you can just simply vote to deny the request. If you are open to exploring the possibility of moving forward with this, the next step would be then to approve the request for the purposes of referring it to the planning commission for developing ordinance that would address the request.
Would it be appropriate to refer this to the Finance Administration Ordinance Committee at the next meeting after you have a chance to review the ordinance?
Yes, that would be appropriate as well. If you want to keep it in council's hands for the time being or the committee to make a recommendation with respect to the request, that's appropriate as well.
Mr. Cassidy, is, could this be a case-by-case exception considered by the borough council?
No, no. So, the zoning ordinance, so the zoning ordinance needs to be enforced as written. The zoning officer is statutorily required to enforce the zoning ordinance as written and any exception to that would have to be through a variance application to the zoning hearing board. So, council could not approve an exception when it comes to a zoning ordinance requirement.
So, the business owner has another remedy perhaps?
At this stage, I don't think so because this is a use in a zoning district and the requirement isn't a, you have to prove hardship and this is not necessarily hardship. The hardship would be him trying to put it on the first floor. Correct. So, he's creating his own hardship from a zoning standpoint.
And I would just be attracted to why that ordinance came about. I mean, there are tattoo places in lots of townships and municipalities that are on the first floor and I do recall a tattoo shop on Main Street that was on the first floor. I'm trying to look up the year it was there and it was a nice establishment. So, I guess for me, are we going to prevent a business from coming in with a business plan and just kind of look at it? I don't think it hurts to explore and see why we decided to make the plan of four hours. The zoning officer is statutorily required to enforce the zoning ordinance as written, and any exception to that would have to be through a variance application to the zoning hearing board. So, council could not approve an exception when it comes to a zoning ordinance requirement.
So, the business owner has another remedy, perhaps?
At this stage, I don't think so, because this is a use in a zoning district, and the requirement isn't a, you have to prove hardship, and this is not necessarily hardship. The hardship would be him trying to put it on the first floor. Correct. So, he's creating his own hardship from a zoning standpoint.
And I would just be attracted to why that ordinance came about. I mean, there are tattoo places and lots of townships and municipalities that are on the first floor, and I do recall a tattoo shop on Main Street that was on the first floor, and I'm trying to look up the year it was there. And it was a nice establishment. So, I guess for me, are we going to prevent a business from coming in with a business plan and just kind of look at it? I don't think it hurts to explore and see why we decided to make the plan of growing.
I agree with Sarah. I don't, I don't, you know, we have a, we have a borough resident who has a desire to have his business in the borough, and whether it's a tattoo shop or a nail salon or a beauty salon, I don't, I don't understand. I don't, like Sarah, I don't understand the rationale behind the second story thing, the second floor. I mean, obviously, you know, he sends him this letter, he has handicapped clients that cannot get to a second floor. So, and, and then you would have to bring everything you would need in there and all the things for ADA accessibility, and why would we want to limit this business that does not appear to have any kind of ramifications for the borough to allow it?
It, it, it certainly sounds like a tattoos are something that we didn't like, so we'll prevent it from having a business. That's why, but if you're checking to see the rationale, second floor, first floor, we really do need to support business, business ADA on it. So, I, I suggest we limit it if you have a view.
Would, would council available to having further discussion at committee in our March First? Now, at that time, Solicitor Cassidy couldn't have a better understanding of how, how it came about, how it came to be about any ordinance or any ordinance whose actual, you know, ordinance.
Those words weren't tipped. Do you know, do you know if that 33 West name has an accessible entrance? Because I know there's like, if I'm looking at a picture right now, it looks like there's steps in the front entrance. So, I don't know if that's, if there's an alternative entrance or something. There are ways that we can, we can get, we can make it ADA compliant. I would give you a perfect example, 71 West name nails, the nails, the nails law. Mr. Lee bought that property. It is not ADA compliant, but he has a bell outside, and whenever someone comes up and has his mobility challenged, they ring the bell, him and another person, they help that person come in the building. And now, when they're in the building, it's okay, and then when they leave, they help them leave. So, there are exceptions to certain things in the ADA. And another one that falls under that is how much renovation they're going to do to a property. Is it going to trigger an ADA compliance inspection? So, there are options to that. When you're dealing with a second floor, this building's a perfect example, with the police station on the second floor, one of the first things they had to do when they moved in here was put the elevator into the second floor. If your council chamber was on the second floor, we would have to make accommodations for people with physical handicaps to be able to get to the council meetings.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. So, there are, there are options for that. This guy, I will say this, we've had, from 2014, when I was in the code's office to now, we have had probably 10 or 12 people come in and ask for a zoning permit, and basically they were denied because of that stipulation. This guy has tried three times, and finally he got to the point where he's ready to write a letter asking us to change the zoning ordinance. And being the fact that he's a borough resident, he's stuck around and tried this the most. So, he is, he's a good guy. I think if you continue to talk to us, I think you'll see that he has a good plan, he has a good idea what he's doing, and he just wants to have his business in the borough.
Thank you. I think the best thing to do is support this to the Finance Administration Ordinance Committee at the March First meeting and have the office prepared for council's recommendation at that time.
Correct.
So, approval?
We, we use a recommendation, you're not suggesting a vote on a motion at that time, you're saying you would recommend further movement. Correct.
Mr. O'Neill, do you have anything for, you just broke in the hour, just to discuss on the agenda?
Just an update with the library. I will be meeting soon with the executives for the president as part of my names on the law.
Mr. Bure. Any economic development?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, today we do have action to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 426 Simpson Street for fire damage restoration recommended by the District of Architecture Review Board, AP 206.
Would you like to make that a motion?
Yeah.
Interim motion for action to approve the certificate of appropriateness for 426 West Simpson Street for fire damage restoration recommended by the District of Architecture Review Board.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
So, do you have any explanation? Is there a second?
I will second.
There's a marking, second. Is there any discussion?
Just that on chart then last Monday, and they did vote to make that recommendation.
Recommendation for the certificate of appropriateness.
Of appropriateness, yes.
Yes, Mr. Bure.
So, referring to the letter provided to council that was read earlier, Section 105 111 section, can we just get a little more clarification?
Mr. Cassidy, could you clarify that in light, the council cannot require remedy under that section?
Yes. Excuse me. So, Section 511 of the HARB ordinance deals with the issuance of certificates of appropriateness for uninhabitable properties that have been destroyed by fire or some other catastrophic event. And in, in the case of a residential property that is uninhabitable because of this catastrophic event, the building owner is given two options. The owner can go through the regular HARB process, which can take time, and because of the nature of the destruction to a building or partial destruction of the building, the owner might not have time to start repairs. So, Section 511 provides a second process that the owner can follow, and that is, they can agree to the issuance of the building permit, and with the understanding and expectation that the building is going to be restored to its original condition using the same structure, the same building materials, so that there be no material change to the, to the exterior of the structure itself. And with the added understanding that if the owner were to make changes with the reconstruction or rehabilitation of the destroyed building, if the owner made changes that deviated from the original structure or original materials, that the owner was doing that at his own risk, number one, and that the owner could be required by HARB to go back and undo that work and to correct the work and to restore the building to its original condition. In, in this case of the issuance of the building permit of 426 West Simpson Street, the building permit was not issued under the HARB regulations. It was determined at the time of the issuance of the building permit that the HARB, HARB did not, the HARB ordinance did not apply because of representations that were made, and there was not an understanding at that time that the building permit was being issued subject to Section 511, and there was not an understanding on the part of the owner that he was proceeding at his own risk with respect to any construction that deviated from the original design. So, because of that disconnect that occurred at the time of the issuance of the building permit, there's no legal basis for the borough to go back on the owner today and require the owner to undo the work that was, that's been done to date. So, and I'm going to go a little beyond the question. So, when, when, when the issue came to light that, that the owner was building a structure under the building permit that was otherwise permissible under the zoning ordinances and whatnot, and permissible under building regulations, when it, but it came to light that it was deviating from the original design, the owner was directed to file application with HARB and go before HARB, work that had already been performed, but HARB reviewed, and it was before you tonight in terms of the certificate of appropriateness, HARB was reviewing work that has yet to be completed on the building itself in terms of exterior finishes. So, that's, that's why it's a very limited scope of review by HARB with respect to the recommendation for the approval of the certificate of appropriateness.
So, there are the, what we reviewed at HARB was the siding and the windows that were brought before us. Am I correct? You sharing that?
That is correct.
Siding and windows.
Kind of a follow-up question for Solicitor Cassidy. So, the only portion of the property that HARB is reviewing is the portion that's forward facing to the street at that time.
That, that is correct. That, under the HARB ordinance, there's a limitation in terms of HARB's scope of review of any building application, and so it's, under the HARB ordinance, the, the HARB has jurisdiction over the exterior of the building that's, that's visible from this, this street, not visible from properties behind, not visible from back alleys, only from public rights away, rights of ways in the street. And it specifically excludes alleys in the ordinance, or in the definition of street.
So, once again, because there are so many people that are interested in this topic, could you just address whether the side of the building, which is visible to the street, is both under HARB's jurisdiction or whether it's just the forest facing wall?
So, I, I, I don't know where you're going to be asking me to start. So, I, I'm a little bit, I don't want to be in the hot seat, but I'm not, I wasn't coming prepared to answer the question. So, it's my understanding that the, that the borough's practice, going back to the, enacted the HARB ordinance, has been to limit the HARB review to the front to the side. That's my understanding of the practice. Based upon the HARB ordinance itself, depending upon the circumstances of the location of the structure and its relation to streets such as a core property, in a situation like that, I think an argument could be made that HARB's jurisdiction would apply to both the front to the side and the side to side that's facing the side street. Thank you. But it depends upon the circumstances. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Bure, any further questions?
No, not for me. I just thought it was a good idea to hear this this evening for everyone present, because I feel that, I feel that the committee may not, the council may not have any choice but to move forward at this point. Given the future situations, I hope we would perhaps take a different course as a borough.
Yes.
I agree with that.
Thank you very much. You didn't even click on the.
It's okay.
Mr. Bure, any questions?
No.
Mr. Bure, please.
The only thing I do, you know, listening to the HARB meeting that happened, it sounded to me like they're going to be reassessing their processes, which is, I think, important to make sure that, not that they were doing anything wrong, but just to make sure that they're capturing everything they can capture. And I understand, I don't know if the office is doing the same thing as far as making sure that something like this doesn't happen again, not assessing blame, just making sure that we're reviewing our processes properly.
I believe we are going to do that. Thank you. Mr. O'Neill?
We want your questions. Thank you.
I have no questions.
Right, I mean, there's no further discussion on, on this issue. So, let's call a question. All in favor to approve the certificate of appropriateness?
All right.
All opposed? Motion passed. Public Works and Chasing, Mr. Bucuk.
Yeah, so we're going to start off with the Captain Byrne, the solicitor's memo on the chance to release it here as super app that seems amenable for stories. So, I'll kind of, I mean, yeah, I'll kind of turn it over to Solicitor Cassidy.
Well, I guess, well, I think I'll go over to Solicitor Cassidy if you want to make a brief.
I, I, nothing to add beyond what I presented at the lead on what was second, if it was. Hopefully, council, I'm sure, an opportunity to review the memo, and I'm certainly happy to answer your questions. As I think I stated in the memo, there's no right or wrong answer here, but it's a matter of doing what's in the best interest of the, of the borough in terms of operationally and ownership of the assets.
At this, at this point, then, I'd like to open it up to anyone on council who has questions regarding the memo.
So, I have a question. I know the borough has managed the authority for how long now without it this, I think, option two is having a little bit more authority. Has there been any issues, and how long, I'm curious, has that been that the borough has managed again?
We've been managing the, we've been managing the.
I think, I think council, and I have a question, is, so, council managed the authorities for roughly 40 years?
Yeah, from, when they stopped meeting, yeah.
What, what were the issues during, what was the issue during that time? Were there any issues during that time under council leadership, and why make some change to the authority control?
Yeah. The thought process behind it from staff was the fact that the authority was originally a, the sanitary story, as, as the solicitor indicated in his letter, they took, they bought the financing for building the sewer plant, for putting the, the infrastructure in place. The authority was in charge of all of that. It was when the authority, I don't know, the, the term that was used was when the authority started to drop the ball, is when the borough stepped in and took control back of the, of the sewer plant. So, and I'm going to say this, late 60s, early 70s is when that happened?
Eighty, eighty.
What was it? Eighty-two. All right. And then, the authority kind of hung around there for a while, and then the council just did appoint new people to the authority group. So, when the sewer water fee came down through and discussion was talked about that, the authority was brought back in. Staff's thoughts at that time was that other than the general obligation bond that was out there, it kind of made sense to put the authority, put under the authority's control the sewer plant operations, the sewer plant facilities, the sanitary facilities, and the stormwater facilities and everything that went with it. And that's what I kind of thought was going with the original agreements and stuff. But the, in, in light of that, some things have come up. One was the refinancing of the bond. That was all done in the borough's name, and then the, the ordinances and stuff were never transferred over to the authority for them to enforce, for the authority to force. So, that's what brought, that's what we're at right now. But as far as the pressing goes, yes, the last two, two and a half years, the borough has been managing for the authority, the sewer plant and the, the stormwater.
Okay. And so, option two, Solicitor Cassidy, can you repeat the benefit of two versus one, the first and second option? I think that's really where my focus was.
Yes. So, for the benefit of the public, if you don't have a copy of the memo, in the memorandum that I prepared for council, I outlined three options, which were discussed at the last meeting. Option one is what would I call it, the status quo option, and that would be with the borough maintaining ownership of the assets and, and operational responsibility for the assets with really no input from the authority. The, the benefit of option one is that the borough, borough council maintains ownership, control of the asset, keeping in mind that, that borough. control of the asset, keeping in mind that, that Borough Council has, and the borough, the borough has the, or holds the debt, the nine point eight million dollar debt that was issued back in two thousand twenty. So you, you owe the money, you wanna control the asset and control the revenue stream that's coming in to pay the debt, and, and you're maintaining operational control. And I discussed it within the memo, based on my, my, my years of experience in representing municipalities and municipal authorities, there's potential downside to that scenario for, in a number of ways. Number one, when it comes to making decisions on the operation of a wastewater treatment plant, it requires a lot of time and getting, educating oneself on the, the challenges of operating a wastewater treatment plant and the need for making improvements and investing capital into improving that structure and then the facilities. When you have folks that are elected to office for four-year terms, you potentially can have a lot of turnover on council, and when that happens, you can lose a lot of corporate knowledge on the governing body of council when it comes to making those decisions that are important for the community. Compare that to a municipal authority where you have, an authority board with five appointed members who rotate off, one every year and get reappointed. So at any given time, you're going to have at least four of your five board members on the authority who are going to have some degree of corporate knowledge and understanding of that ass, of, of the facilities. And as a practical matter, you frequently have authority members who are community-minded, who want to participate and assist the municipality, and they could, authority members tend to get reappointed because it can be hard to find folks that will serve on an authority to get there. So you have that corporate knowledge. The other piece to this is that if, if council and the borough maintains control of the asset and, and control of the operations, that also means that council is and will be making decisions with respect to sewer rates and tapping fee rates and all the other fees associated with operating the system. And I'm not saying that would happen here in Mechanicsburg, but in other municipalities, that can result in political pressure on elected officials who will run on a platform of, of not raising sewer rates when in fact raising sewer rates may be critical in terms of being able to fund capital improvements to your wastewater treatment system that are being mandated by the state. Running a wastewater treatment plant is a highly regulated undertaking, and in my opinion, it's best not to make those decisions in a, in a heated political environment. Again, compare that to a municipal authority where you have appointed board members who, who are on the borough for five-year terms, they're shielded from that political pressure to a large extent because they can simply focus on making best decision for the authority and, and by extension for the community in terms of the operation of that asset. So I, I think that's a, that, that weighs in favor, in my opinion, of, of moving the decision-making to an authority when it comes to the operation of the asset. And that's where it gets to option number two, which is structured that way. Now, option number two is, suggests that the borough would maintain ownership of the assets, but entrance with a lease, is a lease agreement with the authority. The authority then would be charged with making the decisions with respect to the operations and any capital improvements to the system. And through that lease agreement, the authority would be required to pay lease payments back to the boroughs, so that the borough can pay its debt service on the nine point eight million dollars. And then in the meantime, the authority will be able to generate additional revenues to cover operational expenses and future capital improvements. Part of that arrangement though, and this is where it gets perhaps a little counterintuitive, part of that arrangement would necessarily entail the authority entering into a management agreement with the borough where the borough provides the day-to-day staffing to run the plant on behalf of the authority and the staffing to provide the administrative services required to collect the revenues for the authority. So it's, it's a somewhat convoluted, but it, it's a structure that, it's one of many structures that we could have, but it's a structure that, that allows the borough to maintain control of the asset and to have sufficient revenues generated to pay the borough's debt service, but then to have the authority in a position to make decisions with respect to operations.
Solicitor Cassie, I have a couple of questions for you based off of that. It sounds very complicated, that, it sounds very complicated and bureaucratic, the option number two. But I can't mind, option number one and option number two are both preferable options compared to option three, is that correct? Which, option three is transfer all the assets, so transfer the assets to the authority and then...
Um, I don't know if I necessarily agree with that. I, I think that probably options two and three were, would be preferred. And I'm saying that from the context of, of option three is turning everything over to the authority and let them, and let them manage the asset, but then the borough would still be providing, providing administrative and operational staffing to run the day-to-day Because, and I say two or three would be preferable from my perspective, again, because I'm a, I'm a strong believer in, in having authority members having corporate knowledge of, of the operations and making decisions that are shielded from political pressures.
What, what power does the authority have? Who does the, in, in option number two's arrangement, who does the borrower? Is the borough, the borrowers, the borough owns the asset? Or does the authority do the borrowing because the, the, the...
So it, it, it could be either. And in all likelihood, in option number two, the, the borough would be involved with the borrowing in some capacity, either as, as the borrower or as, as, as the borrower or as a guarantor of the municipal debt. Are, are the, are the assets collateralized? Uh, currently, yes. I, I believe they are in the current debt. Now, they're guaranteed also by, by the borough's full faith credit and their tax authority as well.
Which is why the authority couldn't get the loan when we refinanced in two thousand, it was too new to, to borrow what we had to...
And that's why we didn't transfer the general obligation bond over to the authority when the authority was reinstated, was because they had basically no credit rating at that point in time. Their, their bond rating was, was nil, the borough had a double A plus, and we just kept it, we just kept it in Rs and included it in the operations agreement that they would pay the borough the fee. And that came through, bond council at that time was part of their discussion.
So under, under option two and option three as well, if, if it's structured the way outlined in option two or three, under those scenarios, the, the authority would have a revenue stream through monthly sewer bills. And so under option two and, and option three, the sewer authority could be in a position to issue what's called self-inhibited debt. That is debt, it's a municipal debt that's, that's paid for by the, the revenue generated by the project itself. So option two and option three would give the authority or put the authority in a better position to be able to borrow money in the future. But ultimately, we've come down to credit rating and, and whether or not a lender would be willing to lend to them directly.
And just for clarification, you borrow money for operations as well as capital improvements? Typically, borrowing would only be for capital improvements. So we're looking at capital improvement mandated, you said, earlier? Do I understand that correctly?
That's, that's correct.
And then we're bound to state...
Correct. So a, as we're, it's, it's necessary to submit reports to the, it's part of environmental protection in terms of, of plant operations and to project out in terms of the operation of the system, and there are annual inspections as well that occur. And so the, the engineer is going to be able to project what's going to be required, you know, based upon capacity needs at the plant itself or if, if there are issues with the collection system that need to be remediated, you know, the day could come where you need to install five miles of new sewer line, which is incredibly expensive undertaking. Well, in that case, you'd be, it would be mandated ultimately by, by DDP, or at least it would be, the project would be approved by the authority under the specter of being mandated by, by DDP. In terms of being proactive and staying ahead of, of, of the regulatory oversight and, and moving forward that project accordingly.
Solicitor Cassie, with the relationship between the borough and the authority and the authority, the borough is still owning the assets, leasing to the authority, and the authority then entering into an operational agreement with the borough to manage those assets, what control or what say the Borough Council have if, if they don't agree with, well, does the authority have then operational power to make purchases on equipment and hire personnel outside of that agreement?
Um, it, I, the answer is, is, it depends. I would say normally, yes, but there could be a, a, an agreement in place in terms of the management that, there could be an agreement in terms of, of how far the authority could go in terms of, of purchasing equipment and whatnot.
Okay. But that is a concern, that's a concern in mind if we go with option two, is, is the redundancy of, of our purchases and what, you know, making sure that we're not, we're not duplicating efforts in terms of the equipment that the borough purchases and then say the authority, so, oh, we need X piece of equipment. Sorry for the use of the authority. So, or maybe an additional hire that the, the council doesn't particularly approve of, so.
So, but when it comes to personnel, so that, that's an easier questioning answer. The, the management agreement with, with the authority could be clear that, that, that the authority is not going to be, they're not going to be an operating authority in terms of having, hiring any staff or personnel, that, that the borough stands in an exclusive position of, of providing staffing, and it could be the equipment as well. And that there's an agreement, there, there could be an agreement between the borough and the authority that in the event that the borough requires any additional equipment or supplies or materials in order to perform daily functions, that the, the authority and the borough will, will, will discuss in good faith about the, the purchase of, of that equipment and materials and be funded by the authority.
In your opinion, does the authority, if the, if the borough goes with option two, does the authority have the, have the option to not enter into a lease agreement with the borough? I mean, is, is there that, is that, is that a possibility?
Yes.
A lease agreement or a mandate?
So, I mean, we're assuming that the borough would, we're assuming that the authority wants to continue to take that, take that on and enter into that management and operational agreement, so.
Correct. So this is all speculative, we haven't discussed this with the authority. The, the authority is a separate governmental entity, they can make a decision whether or not they want to move forward in that manner or not.
I don't wanna hold, I don't wanna take all the questions.
You do agree. It, it seems, it seems that your largest concern from your experience is the political pressure that could be through elected officials with regard to fees.
That coupled with the continuity of corporate knowledge, that's, that's a large issue.
But, but that does speak to President, most concerns, that the authority decides that the relationship with the borough is not in the authority's best interest.
Correct.
That's correct. And what, what have you seen as a potential downside when that type of thinking occurs?
So I've never, I've never seen a situation quite like that. I, I have seen several examples over the years where authorities and the governing bodies, whether it's a borough commissioner or a township commissioner's, where they're not seeing eye to eye. And, and that's, that's problematic because if you're with a, a municipal authority and the governing bodies in the municipality, they're, they're butting heads, the only loser there is going to be the community at large. And, and so it, it, in some communities, that, that can lead to power struggles between the two entities, and it's, it's just, usually that all boils down to personalities and, and just people not knowing how to get along and not being willing to set aside their personal differences for the betterment of the community. Again, personalities, and that's just not healthy. That's not really answering your question.
I think I understand.
Okay. Thank you.
We'll have a question, but I guess I have a statement to say that I, I would lean towards two, because I like pertaining the asset with the debt, and I like, I like the corporate knowledge piece, right? That the people are gonna sit at these chairs three or four years from now, they're not, them may not know what they need to know to make good decisions for the authority, but I would always wanna do that if the authority feels like they're in with us, right? So having a, a conversation with them about this before we would make a decision would be, that would be my, my feel.
Counselor, I, I, I agree with you a hundred percent on that. That's, it is very reasonable. This is the authority, that the authority has been engaged formally in the conversation.
Yeah.
What, what other option would there be? Who else are they gonna work with? Like that?
No, aren't they, I mean, are companies pick on too that manage the, I guess, the management?
They would own the assets.
But they'd be leasing it, so...
They'd be leasing it, we'd have the operational, yeah. It's a partnership.
Is, what other municipalities have the arrangement of option two?
So we have that in, in Dolphin Borough. They, they came about in a very different way, but it had to do with lending and being eligible for federal funding for a wastewater treatment plant expansion project. It, it's not, it's not a common scenario, but in a situation like this where, where the borough holds the debt, it's...
Would you say it's more common to transfer the assets and for the authority to have to own the assets? Would you say it's more common to transfer the assets and for the authority to have to own the assets and then lease it back to borough for operational control?
The more common scenario is one of two. Either, uh, option, or scenario one, the common scenario, is that you have an operating authority where the, the authority owns the asset, the authority employs the employees and, and handles all of the administrative functions and provides the service to the community. Uh, the other common scenario is that you have, instead of an operating authority, you have a financing authority where the authority goes out, borrows money, builds the asset, but doesn't have any employees, but instead enters into a lease agreement with the municipality. And the municipality then leases it with, with a guaranteed revenue stream back to the authority to pay debt. So that's, those are the two most common scenarios that, that I see.
So, so where our authority has the ability to borrow, to pay off the nine mil or so that we owe, maybe that would be a point in time where we could revisit the area.
That is correct. And that's an excellent point. But just like looking, looking down the road, long term, that could be five years down the road or whatever, but over time, the authority will be able to have a track record of generating revenue and be in a position to borrow to, to retire the borough's debt and perhaps to fund other projects.
So, so it's not, the authority is not in a position to borrow money at this time?
At, at this time, it's my understanding of it.
And if they own the assets, would they have enough collateral to do so?
I, I don't think that, that's a.
That's, it, under the general obligation, that's not, that's not an option. You have to be, you have to have some kind of credit rating. Uh, you don't have a bond rating to be able to get a general obligation bond. And the authority does not have.
The authority does not have that. We, we, it's too new in the, the borough holds the bond rating that we, we did the refund in terms of.
So, does it, does it make sense then to just have it stay the way it is until the authority is able to borrow its own money? Or does it make sense to do like option number two, which I see as like the collaboration with the authority and the borough? So like the borough is like sort of assisting the authority until they are able to get their own money?
Well, in my opinion, I think, my opinion is, I think, you eliminate all the borough obligations. And, and I understand, Sir Cassidy, and the, the desire to have that corporate knowledge, but I also think you have to balance that with, with how we, we also set tax rates. We're also responsible to residents in terms of, in terms of a whole host of other items that are equally as important as the sanitary system. And we make those decisions as elected officials. In the past, we can, but Borough Council has made the decisions, and I think why this one has come to the sewer treatment plant in consultation with the engineers and the management. So, you know, we've done significant upgrades, made significant improvements there, reviews. So, I, I don't actually, I don't have the, the, I guess, I don't see as broad of a field as Sir Cassidy does in terms of that respect. I think it's operated well here in the past. I think that, um, the layers, the, the layers of bureaucracy that the leasing, leasing to the authority with an operational agreement back to the borough to manage just creates a lot of ambiguity and possibilities for potential situations to arise down there that would lead to, to disagreements and where, and it is our largest asset. It is the borough's largest asset. We would, we would still maintain ownership of that, but we, we don't have, we don't have the control. And, you know, coming from the real estate industry, you don't, you don't do that with, with your properties. You don't, you don't rely on your tenants to make the capital improvements for your, for your buildings. You don't rely on them to make those decisions. You, you see that as the, as property. But that's, that's my personal opinion. That's my opinion as a council member, not as a, as a, as a, as a member.
Would it be worthwhile to have the authority then come and sit with us and have a, a conversation?
I think so. I think it would be worthwhile. I think the authority, the authority didn't, I mean, they, they didn't come with any corporate knowledge. They didn't come with any background, and they're still new. And we rely, just as council would rely, the authority relies, just as council would rely, on the opinions of its professionals, of the sort of superintendent, Huey, the superintendent of the sewer treatment plant, engineer Beddink, the, the engineer from H R G, who is our sanitary sewer engineer, and of the borough manager. So, uh, bringing, having, so now the authority, bringing all those people into the, they helped create that, you know, they helped create that, that knowledge. And that's certainly something that could happen here. I mean, it's not, I, I trust, trust council members to make decisions as much as I trust authority members to make decisions.
Do we have a projection for when we anticipate the nine point eight million debt to be produced?
It was all that, it was all that stuff that T A that P F M made out last, uh, two weeks ago. Uh, I think it's twenty, it's a twenty-year debt.
Twenty years.
Yeah, and that was, it's in place about twenty years too. That's the, not twenty years, ten, fifteen years. That was the, uh, the unfunded mandate for the Chesapeake Act. Uh, that was a sewer plant upgrade, eighteen and a half million dollars of sewer plant upgrade. Uh, and that was, that was where that bond, that was where that bond was generated from. So, I'm speaking to Mr. Cassidy. So, Sir Cassidy, when he said about unfunded mandates coming from the state, that was a, that's a large one, and that was a, a major upgrade. It's also what instituted the authority back into place was the, the stormwater M S four that you've heard Engineer Rodowski speak about and ways to, to figure out how to pay for that. That's what brought all this on two and a half, three years ago, almost four years ago now that from staff time of discussing how we were going to get this stuff paid for and what we were going to do on the forward. So, uh, I guess that would be my big question then. Since we've been operating under the agreements and stuff now that are already signed, uh, those are still in effect, I'm, I'm taking. This, this changes nothing until council either rescinds those agreements or the authority rescinds it.
Of course, sir, I can directly pull action to, to.
I just, I'm not really, I still have the, the power of the authority tomorrow for the sewer plant.
Well, I don't think that, I don't think that, like I question.
How big is that job? How, how big, how big a job is it to manage the sewer plant?
Uh, with the staff I have, it's not quite as much as what it was at one time. It's figured in my salary, I think fifty-fifty, fifty percent borough, fifty percent authority.
So fifty percent of the time the borough manager spends is spent on the authority?
There's things that cross, I mean, it's not, it's not a dead, it's figured fifty-fifty.
So, that percentage, your percentage of the budget is directly your salary though?
It is now, because of the agreement.
It used to be different.
It used to be different. It used to be, it used to be fifty-fifty when I first came on before the authority was put in. When the authority agreement with the borough and the management agreement was put into place, uh, my salary was shown in the budget as to what it is because it's an in and out with the authority. We, and that's the way the auditors learned all that stuff set up.
I'm just less concerned about where the salary for the borough manager came and more concerned about the resources that the job takes because it occurs to me in the short time that I've been here that the borough manager job is just a massive job. And I've heard, Sir Cassidy, I think that this is correct, and I'm wrong, that in many municipalities, the authority is operating independently, uh, the municipal authority. In some cases, yes. And so, it would have its own resources. If the job's that large, does it need to be its own?
It has a, the sewer treatment plant has its own director, the superintendent Huey.
I do understand that. I just am, I'm thinking, I guess, about the integration between the borough manager and where, you know, is borough manager over that superintendent or are they on the same levels? Where they're reporting to? I mean, I, I would think it's a very large question. We're talking about organizational issues here that so far have gone, who owns the assets of?
Superintendent Huey is in one of the departments, is a department, I think, in class of directors. So he works under the borough manager.
Right.
Any other questions? I don't, we're not taking action on this tonight. I just wanted to give everyone an opportunity to point out their, their questions and, um, an opportunity to formulate any additional questions we may have in the future, you know, between now and the next meeting and see what the direction might be to go at the next meeting. I think it sounds like we should have a conversation with the, with the authority, maybe invite the authority to participate at that time.
And I just reiterate, I, I think I said at the outset that there's no right or wrong answer here. In, in terms of the three options that I outlined, and I know, while I expressed my, some recommendations and preferences, that's not to say that any, any one of those is the best option for, for the borough. I think it's a matter of you to make the decision as to what, what's in the best interest of the borough in terms of moving forward. Now, I'm here to be a, a resource to help you make that decision. And I'll certainly tell you what I think in terms of, of my opinions when you ask those questions. But at the end of the day, there's no right or wrong answer.
Right, that, I think we're, I think we're having some tough discussions right now. Some tough, this is a tough decision for council. And the reason we're doing this is because, um, I think the, the vision at the time was that the authority, it was set up to be a stormwater, full stormwater and to be, I thought that was the impetus of why it was created. And at the particular time that that was done, these things weren't really discussed. So, we're, we're really having the tough discussion now. So, so I appreciate, I appreciate all the council members' time and consideration to listen, really jumping into it and doing the tough work because it is, there's a lot, there's a couple issues and there's a lot to, a lot to catch up on. So, I appreciate it. I think we should, should keep going.
Uh, no, I, uh, please, under the public works and safety, we have a, a citizen, Mr. Juan Abalbret. Would you like to be with speaker first, Poggy?
Yes, please. Good evening. I'm Juan Abalbret. We live at Fifty Six Sharon Avenue, back in the Coldest Side, the longest development. I'm representing a new petition for a four little stop sign at the corner of Norway Street and Sharon Avenue. I'm representing the majority of our neighbors on Sharon Avenue and Dora Street. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. When I first learned Norway was being connected from Legacy Park Development to the existing Norway Heritage Acres, my neighbors and I had taken time about how much more traffic we would see coming up through Norway as a shortcut to Simpson Ferry, the Giant, Light Aid, the Post Office for State Store, Windsor Park, and even Allenville at this point. I called Roger at the borough office and talked to see if there was any discussion about putting a stop sign there before that road opened up into our neighborhood. And at the time, there was nothing discussed at that point and we had friends just monitor the situation. We had a number of other calls from the neighborhood about their present concern. We have a lot of children that ride bikes, those lost and drivers turning off a sharing onto Norway that are not used to any traffic coming from that direction. I was hoping to be a bit more proactive and have a stop sign installed before cars came driving out of the development. There's nothing to slow them down between the development until they hit the stop sign at Allison Street. So I decided to start this petition to go out to the neighbors and raise our concern with the additional traffic coming through that intersection. Almost six hundred homes is a significant number of drivers with the potential to come through there. I went there by door last fall and gathered eighty-two signatures, which, larger hand, I don't know if you guys got copies, just from the folks on Sharon Avenue and the livelihoods of Dora. I thought these were the folks most impacted and their children by the additional traffic. And there were fifty-eight homes I liked too. I got signatures from fifty-four of the homes and had someone left to the door. I also had four signatures from some water roomette while I was steering my door by door, two folks from Cochrane and two from Allison. I had every intention of getting this presented to you before the street got open, but the holidays came and I put it on my back burner. Now the street continues to open, the cones are gone. We've already begun seeing more activity coming out of the development. Even when the cones were in place, neighbors and myself witnessed them being moved or even maneuvered. At least the cones slowed the drivers down temporarily. The U P S driver was trying enough to put the cone back in when he was across the line. I know when the road opened up at the speed of drive, there was a yield sign put in place before the chain link fence was removed, allowing folks to come across that street. I hope you will be proactive in having a stop sign put on Norway at Sharon. But there is one stop sign where, like I said, there's nothing that slows anybody down to make it to stop sign at Allison, which is another two blocks. Um, the plant connection on Allenville is not there yet, except for a few drivers who want to use the stone path, unless I've seen that. Anyone wanting to go in that direction will quickly find the way using Norway and either Cochrane or Allison, you know, for coming back doors to an end to mechanicsburg. I know many drivers pull out and turn the off of Cochrane and drivers rolling through stop signs at Allenville that almost hit me and my dogs when we were walking. With more traffic in our area, I can see that happening even more often. Did I mention we have a lot of bike riders and walkers in that area? So I'm asking you to put your phones in, in your hand, raise your hands, shoes, where the name Sharon Avenue, Dora and Cochrane, and make good decisions to improve the safety of our neighborhood. Of course, it's a line my neighbors just said to me the other day. So we didn't tell anyone to put a stop sign on that corner, but not putting one there could. But I have to, give it.
Thank you.
Can I put it somewhere? All right. Thank you.
To Sir Cassidy, what is the process we need to go through in order to put a stop sign at that, at that location?
So this, the same code, the borough code is not, doesn't establish a specific process or procedure when it comes to placing traffic control signals and devices such as the stop sign at borough-owned intersections. I, I will say that in some cases, depending upon the circumstances and the nature of the traffic control device that's being requested, in some cases, it's, it's prudent to have a, a, a traffic study done to see whether or not the requested traffic control device is warranted. But under these specific circumstances, I don't think it's necessary to go through that process of, of doing a, a full-blown study. Um, you know, just anecdotally, given the nature of the land development that's taking place in Legacy Park and its connection to the existing road system within what I call heritage acres, I don't know if that's what it's, what it's normally called, but. I think the process for, for approving a four-way stop would simply require a, an ordinance amended to the streets and highways, or streets and, I'm sorry, motor vehicles and traffic section of the code ordinances for the borough. So if council were in favor of moving forward with that, we could develop a draft ordinance to amend the, the code of ordinances, to provide for a four-way stop sign at that intersection.
Does Chief, what are your thoughts?
Stop signs being used as traffic control devices to slow down vehicles rarely impacts what you're looking at. I believe I've heard during the comments that remains that stop signs are being run at Allen Dale and everywhere else. I mean, stop signs being run in all honesty, all over town.
It's fair.
Um, so usually when there's a form of slowing down traffic, it's really not what they're designed for. But is that even a road yet?
Norway, for half a block there, I think there's 2 houses on Norway Street, the other 2 I think are both on, on Sharon. The, the 2 in the corner have Sharon Street address, Sharon. So there's only 2 houses there, that is not, it's not our street. It is a, a street to be dedicated to the borough when they get reached a certain amount of, of population in that, that development. But they haven't, they haven't dedicated any of the, say, 1 either to us yet.
Well, that would be, that would be for enforcement purposes, uh, if you were to look up enforcement purposes, it would have to be on a, we have a street, uh, street that we give up.
Well, Norway, Sharon, we, I think, I think.
I don't know if Norway Sharon, but it's, it's a, you're talking about half a block of, of Norway Street there.
I know it's always been a dead end, as long as I can remember. But, I mean.
I drove it to, it is open. There is a minute.
I just don't get down there or change my desk.
Chief, what would you suggest in, in way of a reduction of speed solution?
That's a good question, too. I mean, there's, stop signs are going to get, look at the majority of the people that are going to obey the traffic laws, like those of us here, are going to get us. So that's a good percentage of what might be coming through in a day, but like the solicitor said, I think a traffic study at this point would be not, not going to show you anything because you're going to get an increase in traffic once more houses build in there, once more residents will go up. I don't have an answer for you there, because you can't really put into these, obviously. Or, I guess, you can't really do that, that's really not a, not something that can be, you know, foul drivers and, or, it'd be, they're moving those every time they ran a file, or maybe breaking a file.
They could fuel.
So, yeah. I think that, I think that if you're going to put those up, that would, that'll get a lot of your neighborhood public to obey the stop signs, but the ones that don't, you're not going to slow down. Probably the ones that you want to are not going to slow down. So. So I have no answer. If I did, it would be wonderful all the way down.
Would, would the council be amenable to having this put on our committee meeting and have Solicitor Cassidy prepare, I mean, the required ordinances?
I think from a safety perspective, I think that, I cannot have anything there, it just seems, maybe would have been, like, not a good idea.
Yeah, I agree. Putting it out, I mean, it's going to slow some people down. So it doesn't hurt anything, does it?
Not, yeah, I agree. I mean, it seems like, when you, when you, that's a bend-in road that's now becoming unnamed road, so something's going to have to change, and to start with a stop sign seems logical to me.
So for council's consideration for recommendation at the committee meeting at the next, March 1st, could you have the necessary documents prepared for us to look at?
Yes, my guy, draft ordinance ready, waiting for review. Thank you.
Thank you.
And at the end of, uh, committee.
Thank you. Public Works and Recreation, I'll call them, what?
Um, they did not have a meeting this month, the rec board did not. They did not have quorum, so there was no February meeting. And we are, we have on the list today to have a discussion on the process for the renovation of the slide between the pool. So I would turn that over to, uh, Manager Cassidy.
Uh, and I am going to convulse Solicitor Cassidy, he seems to be the popular guy tonight. Uh, he, uh, he, we, at the last meeting, I distributed an invitation to bid for renovations to the pool. Solicitor Cassidy reviewed the bid and the bid documents and decided that potentially there may not need to be bid, because it is a major repair, it's not something new. So we can take a look at that, and that's kind of what I'm going to defer to him. I have reached out to 2 other companies now, so I have 4 total, that I've got, 4 or 5 to. The one thing referred to, the gentleman owns the, invented the opposite, so he's another poor company that, now they're based in Florida. It seems that none of these people are based in Pennsylvania for some reason. But there's, they're, they're interested in it, I sent them the bid sections to see if they'd give back the prices. The price that we did receive from the company in Ohio was around $31,000 to renovate the slide. That's a full renovation, that's paint, new seams, fix the D-lams, the whole nine yards, so. That's, that'll put the thing back to almost new status. So, Solicitor Cassidy, I will let you take it from there as far as why we don't have to necessarily walk the business.
Okay, thank you. So, following, um, the, the meeting on the, earlier this month, it, it looked the documents that manager's certainly prepared and reviewing that in the context of requirements of this borough code, at least the conclusion that it's not necessary to competitively bid the project. And here's why. The borough code establishes a, a basic requirement that whenever the borough is going out to purchase supplies, materials, equipment, or enter into contracts for, um, uh, public works improvements in the borough, if the cost of that project in 2022 exceeds $21,700, that the borough council is required to award that contract to the lowest responsible bidder through a competitive bidding process. That's the general requirement. However, there's an exception in the borough code that states that if, if the project entails the repair of existing facilities, and those repairs are not going to expand the facility itself, that, that project or that contract does not require a competitive bid. So it gives you the flexibility then to go out and, and hire, of course, being good stewards of taxpayers, wanting to hire someone who's going to do good work at the lowest price you can find. But it gives you that flexibility of not having to go through what can be a, I think it can be administratively costly process of developing bid specifications and going out to bid. So if you can avoid that process, it's often a, a money saver, avoiding having to competitively bid a project.
Sounds good. Any, um, any other questions?
That being said, did we not already create a bid package to go out? We did create a bid package, but I can pull the specs out of that. I mean, we can, we can put it out on Penn bid if we, if we want to do that. I mean, you're going to get bids all across the, the board on that, you know, from all different areas. The, uh, this, and we could do that. The, with having the 4 that have actually responded to my internet theory and stuff like that, those guys, this is, this is what they do, they renovate fiberglass slides, that is what their business is. So I sent them, just pulled the spec section out of our, our bid package and sent it to them. There was a couple of things that, that Solicitor Cassidy said make sure we'd be telling them. One is the bond, the 10% price bond, and then make sure that the insurance coverage was there. So they're, they're rather aware of what that involves, and I'm basically asking for cost estimate at this point in time, not an official number. And that's what we've received so far from the, the company in Ohio that bid $31,000.
So the $31,000 is cost estimate, not a total price?
Yeah, and, and that was bid site unseen, I must say that. And these guys, they're in Ohio, they, he did send me a picture, a, a proposal that has a photograph of our slides on it. So he could have pulled that off Facebook, to be honest with you, but, so at least he knows what he was looking at when he bid, so. There are still some things, there, they, they email me and want little things here and there, so I'm sending them photographs and stuff like that. So when I get out to the floor and take photographs of it, I, it's a little icy, I'm not throwing up the slides backwards right now, so. But, so the, we're looking at different things of what, you know, where I need repairs made at that pool, but so we can open it this season.
Okay.
Yep.
This is a quick question, how many companies have been, have been asked to provide a quote?
Work?
And we got all 4.
No. Still waiting on someone to reply back.
How many did we receive?
1.
So we almost all of them.
Well, the one just, was just contacted Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday of last week, so, that's a company in Florida, and he was on an airplane when he called me the first time, so.
What's your deadline for the decision?
The date it will open. I mean, the one guy who likes enough, we could wait till the end of the season to bid work, and that's going to hurt the pool. And that's going to be detrimental to the pool season. As soon as possible, I'd like to see the deadline of getting, being back, picking contractor by, I'm going to say the end of March, and then scheduling to have the work done, completed by November then.
Part of, part of the companies indicating that they're having materials supply issues.
And everybody is, yes.
So there truly is no guarantee of a location work start?
No, as a matter of fact, I'm going to, there's a, the $10,000 grant we got from the county, on a different subject here, the $10,000 grant we got from the county, I'm going to have to turn it back because the contractor is not giving me, he's sitting on me 24 months to, to 29 months before he can come in and do the work. And I'm not going to hold up county funds, or, and they can, they can have the money to get to somebody else, we'll apply for a grant later on. So we're not going to be able to do the project that we were looking at because we can't get the, the materials.
What, what project do we speak?
They were a pavilion in the, the, off of York Street.
Okay, but back to the pool.
Back to the pool.
So are the, are the companies that you've approached, do you have any sense of their, their labor situation? Do they have enough labor to complete the job?
No, they're, I, you know, this is, this is all outside firms, there's, none, none of these people are local.
So do you have any idea about their ability to fulfill?
This is, this is all they do, though.
I guess the reason I'm asking, uh, Mr. Manager, is that if, if the firms can't do the work on the schedule you just outlined, then it takes that deadline away.
Definitely.
And it, it changes the process that, that could be used to find a good vendor to do whatever work is determined. If nobody can do it on that schedule because of supply issues and because of labor issues, then we don't need to rush to a decision right now and commit money to something that's not going to get done and going to frustrate the consumer, the resident, the council. So I'm just feeling that happens, we're, we're seeing a lot of delays in, in construction projects, right?
Correct. But this is a specialized field, this is one of those ones where these guys are, this is all they do. They, they, a lot of the, the chemicals they use are proprietary, they're mixing their own stuff, stuff like that, the coating and stuff. The other part of it is, if they can't beat the schedule, the impact is the fact that we're not going to have the slides open for the pool season.
Well, I think that's my point, is that if, if they can't, if they can't get the job done because of materials or labor issues, then we're not going to have the slides open anyway.
Correct.
So, I mean, you're not prepared to guarantee that they can do the work on schedule, are you?
No.
Okay.
That was my, I would like that to be the schedule, but that's not.
I think I know Mr. Eric's point, which is that why lock ourselves into a contract with 1 company if they can't get the job done?
Right, oh, I understand.
This summer, you know, before the summer, when we could take the extra time and find, you know, either a better deal or, you know, an option for, for, for a reasonable, you know, amount of time for next year.
I want to caution everyone that the longer you wait, the worse that slide is going to get, and the more expensive that will be to repair. Because if they need another slide, whether or not you have to go up and down that bodyboard that is already deteriorating, so although, like, I agree, if we can't get it done, we can't find a, a supplement to contract to have it on that timeline, it brings us up to wait, but I, I don't think we should delay it because the bodyboard is a really big part of the pool, and will be more expected the following year.
I'd like to go back to, to the, the thing is a discussional process, and for me, it seems like a standardized bid process would be better in this case because everybody would know, instead of you piecemealing and having to pull things out with different questions we're having to ask, it would seem like it would be better, since you've already developed a bid, to put it out to the earth and see if anybody is willing, even if we have to pay a little bit more to get it done before the pool opens, that would be more valuable than waiting for a year and maybe having more money having to be put out because of higher costs, because of more labor, because of a, a further deterioration of the asset. So for me, I, I would rather see a formal bid be put out and see what we can get back, and then we can make an intelligent decision. But every single person who brings back the bid will have the exact same information, giving us the information that we asked for.
I understand you that, and that's, when we do a telephone bid, are we doing any bid quotes or anything like that? Everything is written down and given to the same people, what they're asking for, the different pictures. So, and they're, they're asking for pictures, what they have a picture of that, so they're, they're getting, you know, what they're asking for because most of these places aren't in Pennsylvania, they're, you know, even if they were in Pennsylvania, they're not locals, so they're not traveling here to take photographs. So, and that's kind of where we're at right now. I mean, it, it, to me, if 61 have a, has a half dozen of them, we can put this stuff out on Penn bid, everything's automated, and it's good to go there. It's, I mean, Mr. Cassidy expressed that that was not a necessity in this case. So that's why we were discussing the process of having one again.
If you do put it out to Penn, do you have to go with someone?
You can reject all the bids, then.
Does it accomplish any additional, because the borough has done work to put it out on Penn bid?
No.
Seems prudent to do that.
It's, it's actually made to go out on Penn bid. The only thing I'm going to need to do is add some of the technical drawings from the, from the original layout, and say, the only, the only cost would be to go to UPS and have the large-scale format scan it to create the PDS.
I don't see any problem with going ahead with both, both groups and see, where, where the best option is.
It's important enough, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Hopefully, we have more, more bids than one.
Yeah.
I have a question, you said you, I guess, moved some touches, have you checked with any of the municipalities that have slides to see if they've had any success with?
Hampton Township just did the same thing in their, their company, their, from an outside source, is, outside the area. Their slide was actually shut down in 2020 for structural reasons. So they had, they had actually structural problems with theirs, there wasn't a D-lam or anything like that. So, um, but if we can get the D-lam fixed, you know, that would be one thing.
I'm going to show you some of the question numbers.
Right, I can go without the chips. Okay. The one that has slides similar to ours, there's not many that have, that's why. If we get a fiberglass body shop to come out and do the work, I think we could fix it that way, too. But the problem is, the guys that run the body shops, to fix a core bed or something like that. like that, they will not, they want me to bring the slide to them.
So the, so the firms that, that municipalities have a slide similar to ours have used and have found success with, have we held those firms names and have we reached out to them?
I haven't reached out to them yet, no.
So that seems reasonable to do this well.
Uh, if we go to Penn bid, then it's, you know, they can, they can pull it off of there and they have to provide references on there to, on Penn bid.
And on Penn bid. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, moving on to personnel committee. Chairman, Chairman Harrison, I'm just going to announce right now that we are going to go into a brief executive session, a brief session for the executive session on a matter of personnel and possible action.
There's something, thanks.
Chairman Harrison, you're back on the spot. Would you be delighted to read that, that action?
I should read that one, too.
Okay, so before the, before the council committee's actions on the Borough Manager's goals for twenty-twenty-two, it shouldn't be goals, it's not goal. Fix the slot. So any other questions? Mr. Anthony News, second, Mr. Booker's second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Please, first, motion passed. No, I'm sure this is common. Mr. Mrs. Lewis.
Thank you, Lily, for seventeen West Main Street. Um, I have a couple of questions and I'm going to have to talk fast quick. The HAB application that I saw through right to now, as I remember, had only two things on it, siding and windows, nothing else. It didn't have the funky roof peak that's altering the facade, it didn't have any of that on there. That's it. So I want to know how this globally gives a certificate of appropriateness for this entire building. I don't need an answer now, but I do expect one. Number two, in section five oh two, it says, work will affect the exterior of the building. It does not say the front of the building. It says, the exterior of the building, and it says, which can be seen from a street or public way. It doesn't say the front of the building that can be seen from the street. It says, the exterior of the building that is visible. And that means three sides of that building, the alley is technically Locust Street, I believe, at that point. And I'll just leave that out there that that is a street as well. So I'm not, I would like answers to those questions because that greatly affects that. I want to see where it says, the HAB only evaluates the front of the building. When we went through the HAB process, it evaluated our entire part of the house that could be seen from Main Street. So, um, I'm just going to call you guys to task and you perhaps just voted on something that you didn't have complete information on, because that was what that application said, um, that I received through right to now. So I thank you for your time and I do expect the answers to those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Lily, we'll get your answers soon. Any other comments?
Hello, Paula Matthews, fix eleven East Palace Street, Lieutenant's Court. I want to commend everyone here for looking at the municipal options that were presented by our attorney. Uh, but it's a very complicated process and it's one I can see that you're all concerned about and want to make the right decision. There's one option or one condition that hasn't really been expressed, and that is the financial ratification of that fixed asset and how it affects the borough and its value. Will the removal of that asset change our rating or credit rating? Are we going to have a lower rating because we have entered into an agreement? Is that going to change that? Uh, that would be my main concern, and I haven't seen any or heard any financial detail about how that would affect the changes that are going to be made. So I ask if you would consider that in your request. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Any other business?
No.
Sixty-sixty?
I have none. Nothing, thank you.
No, thanks.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Your turn.